Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven? Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses. As we forgive those who trespass against us. And we give this an hour to temptation. But the worst of evil. For thy name is the kingdom.
The power and glory. Prayer, whenever.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Regular council meeting minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D is citizen communication. If there's someone that is in the audience or on Web X that would like to address council on something that is not on the agenda, please do so using the chat. Brian, you ready?
I'm all set.
Hey, you're welcome.
Executive session, everybody get out. Thanks for being here, Brian.
All right, so item E is executive session for compensation of personnel. Could I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
We're back in. Thank you. Okay, could I have a motion to, out of executive session, for compensation of personnel?
Motion.
Second.
Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Hey, no action taken. Item F, reports from council committees. Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one due to lack of agenda items. F-two, Safety and Human Resource Committees did not meet on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one due to lack of agenda items. And F-three, Technology and Communication Committee did not meet earlier tonight due to lack of agenda items. Item H, Introduction of New Ordinances and Resolutions. H-one is Resolution Number zero four four dash two one. A resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 for a project known as the Ohio Department of Transportation Ritter Park Area Path Project, which was not included in the two thousand and twenty-one master bid list. Resolution Number zero six two dash two zero. And authorizing competitive bidding in regard thereto and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Subtle.
Second.
Hey, Joel?
Thank you. As we talked about last time, ODOT said that this is part of the path project, the grant money, this is something that we received award in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. So we've been planning this, designing it and everything. Unbeknownst to us, they had explained to us that we needed to have this bid and ready for award or award it by a certain date.
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth. Didn't give us a lot of time to prepare for that, so. I mean, we were ready to go out to bid, it's just it wasn't our first priority at the moment, so. But in order to expedite this, want to get this on the schedule, get it into an ordinance form, because it wasn't on our master bid list. And also, we're requesting suspension because we believe that it's the best for the city if we have more time for bidders to look at this project and, you know, get the most competitive bids that we can get.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Mr. President, I would make a motion for suspension.
Second.
All right, thank you. Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
All right, and Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first read under suspension. Item H-two is Resolution Number zero four five dash two one. Resolution authorizing the city manager to renew a contract with Werler Waste Control and Recycling Incorporated without the necessity of public bidding and declaring emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. Chad, your contract expires when?
December of this year.
Okay.
Billy, could you correct me if I'm wrong? I think it's December first.
That's correct. So we're just requesting first read on this right now. The question came up whether or not to get rid of the recycling program altogether. Although it could be a cost savings, probably would be in the short term, I think, but I don't think that's in the best interest of the city to do that. I have talked with the committee chair about this at some point this past week. We'll stick to the recommendation. We think that going with Werler's and Waste Control with this contract is in the best interest of the city.
Keep it the same price for three years?
Give us the same price for three years. It hasn't gone down in twenty-plus years, so sticking to the same price as it is now for three years, I think, is a good bargain for us.
Yes, and it was the same price for the two previous years as well, so this will be the fifth year.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
May I?
Yes, sir.
With the contract expiring December first, are we going to have an accessible time for three reads on this, or?
If you choose to have three reads, that's fine. If we go past the December first deadline, Werler's verbally agreed to honor.
Okay.
If you choose to suspend emergency, that's your prerogative, but Werler's willing to work.
Okay, perfect.
You do the first read tonight, the second one at the third council meeting, and we do a read, the fourth, the third read during the special council meeting in November. What if three reads in November? We always can do it under emergency with suspension, the third one, so it becomes law right away, if we want to do three reads.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on to second reads. Item H-three, Resolution Number zero four six dash two one. A resolution extending the provisions contained in ordinance number zero two one dash one eight and Resolution Numbers zero eight six dash one nine and zero seven two dash two zero, wherein council impose a temporary reduction and/or temporary elimination of certain residential building permit fees and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. Just requesting first read on this. This would extend the temporary elimination of the building permit fees. I've gotten positive feedback from contractors and developers. I haven't heard any negative feedback on this, so I think we still see housing growth, even though we had a little bit of, had a little bit of a lull, it seemed like. I know the villas have, there haven't been as many villas being sold, but that's on the Old West School property, but there are houses being built and planned for construction in Twin Oaks. One's near completion now, two of them, we just got building permits this week, or, I'm sorry, not this week, last week or the previous week, so.
I believe we have another housing development getting started.
Yeah.
They're surveying it right now.
Got you. Is that the Fair Street one? Yeah, that's the, we talked about that in the past, though, at the dead end of Fair Street. So. That's all I, unless anybody has questions.
Thank you. Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
All right, item I, second readings of ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Item J, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. J-one is ordinance number zero three nine dash two one. An ordinance amending chapter nine thirteen of the City of Napoleon codified ordinances, construction and repair of sidewalks, driveways, and abutting improvements specifically by amending section nine one three point zero two regarding contribution of cost by city, repealing a certain section of ordinance number one 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 dash zero two and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. It's third read, haven't gotten any other comments, other than some people appreciate it because we have applications in or at least plan to be submitted, so.
Got another one Friday.
Got another one on Friday, so. Got $25,000 usually is what we budget for this, and haven't gotten any other comments, so just positive.
Any question?
Yes, sir.
Do I remember right that this is it on voluntary thing? If you're cited by this code enforcement, you don't, you cannot borrow this money or use this money?
That's correct. Yes.
So it's an incentive for people to not get cited? It's an incentive, not a punitive.
But I think a code enforcement officer doesn't go rightly to cite, right? He normally hints first a couple of times to actively encourage compliance.
We do the best we can to encourage people before we tell them.
They must.
They're going to have to.
We don't want Billy to be that busy.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Item J-two is ordinance number zero four one dash two one. An ordinance amending certain city of Napoleon traffic schedules, specifically Schedule Three, stop and yield intersections as listed in the attached Exhibit A and repealing ordinance numbers zero nine six dash zero seven, one one two dash zero seven, and zero three four dash two zero and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Joel?
Nothing, the only new thing to report on this is that we do have the sign ordered. We don't have it in, so as soon as we get it in, we'll get out all the proper notices and make sure that the, you know, the signs get put up, everybody knows what's happening, and just, you know, have good communication for when these signs go up, if it's passed.
If it's passed, is the county in line with what they would need to do?
They are, yes. So we're working in tandem with them on this, and I don't know, do they have their site?
They do have theirs, but they, excuse me, they passed their legislation a month ago, so they have more, actually, they have one on hand, so they didn't have to.
Okay.
And my plan is to work in conjunction, coordinating this with the school, with PD, contact radio station, try to get press releases out prior to making this traffic change.
Hint, hint, nudge, nudge.
Take it out. You don't want me to quote your former finance director, it's not my responsibility.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm totally in favor of this, but I just, there was some discussion a while back, and I still think we need to consider that, and, you know, maybe at the end of the school year, have a little review of how that change has worked out there at the, at that intersection, like by June one, you know? Just a little review of, see how it goes. But I'd say I'm totally in favor of it, but we did, we have shared that we would consider reviewing it, and I think we want to do that. That's all.
It could be Safety and Human Resources Committee, too.
Yes, it could, sir. Are you assigning that to me already?
I mean, if you want to, we can assign it to the committee and have it for that last, first, uh, maybe end of May?
That's quite all right, sir.
Okay.
You're assigning this for the end of May.
End of May. Rox, Rox is.
You got that, Rox, then?
Yep.
Open mouth, insert fuck.
Oh, it's a good thing. That's a good idea.
There's a chance that you won't be on the committee, though, because they were changing, right?
No, that's right.
I probably will still. Because I have more seniority.
That's true. That's very true, yeah.
It's a really good idea.
Since it's the day after Halloween, costumes are probably pretty inexpensive now. If we can get a stop sign costume that Joel could wear for a couple of weeks before.
Little signs, spin one of those. Like the idea, Ken?
It's all right. I like the traffic code thing, it's great.
Get a candy corn, spin it different colors.
I'll make it.
All right, any other serious comments or questions?
If I may, Mr. President, I've heard a lot of positive feedback about this happening. I did get one email about some concerns, and I did address it, but I've heard a lot of good positive feedback from citizens and other parents who are concerned about that three-way stop because more parents are allowing their kids coming from Jan's to ride their bike to school, and they use that crosswalk by the baseball field, so. I think it's a positive thing. At least I hope so.
Good, I think so, too. Any other comments? Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Hey, item K, good of the city. K-one, discussion of action on Van Heining Pumping Station Replacement Project.
Chad, Chad, do you want to take this?
Can you say pond? We were set to receive bids last Wednesday. If you recall, we bid this project in December of two thousand and twenty and received no bids. We were set to receive bids Wednesday, and we once again received no bids. I reached out to some potential bidders on the project and was informed that many of the materials that go into a pump station have doubled in price. As we're familiar with on not only other projects, but probably even stuff for your home. We have a conference call with DIFA, the Department of Environmental Financial Assistance, who we get our funding through on a lot of these projects. We have a conference call with them on Wednesday to see what our options are moving forward. I believe our, I believe the primary option we have to look at is, do we want to increase the engineer's estimate, which would be the budget, which is, do we want to spend more money to build this thing? It is required to be completed by December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three per the long-term control plan and our findings and orders from the EPA. Are they willing to extend that? Possibly. However, that pump station has reached its useful life. It needs some attention soon. But our first step, as we see it at this point, is to have our conference call with DIFA on Wednesday and see what they're going to allow as our options before we say definitively we need to increase the budget, or we need to extend the completion date and see what our options are. And we'll also, I'm also working with Jeremy Oakley, the wastewater treatment plant superintendent. He's the one in charge of keeping the thing running, so that's in the background as well. For now, the project's on hold until we have better direction from the state.
Not gonna, trying not to put you on the spot with numbers, but what was the engineering estimate?
The engineer's estimate was one point six two five million. We had the same estimate a year ago, however, a portion of the project was pulled out of it. We had a boring under the railroad that we estimated to be around $300,000 in the original bid last year. We pulled that out and made it an alternate bid in case for some reason, boring and jacking prices way down. So we pulled about $300,000 out of it, left the estimate at one point six two five, and the fact that we received no bids tells me nobody could get within 10%. So even with pulling that out of the original design, the estimate's still up.
What percentage of that, you said one point six two five?
One point six two five is the engineer's estimate.
What percentage of that would you say is material that have doubled?
Well, every, the structure itself's concrete, and concrete's the highest I've ever seen it. You have the pumps, and they're all made out of metal. All the wiring's gone up thirty to fifty percent since June. Metal's high, so the pumps are way up. I don't think there's too much in it that hasn't gone up. I have another project right now where, since we bid it in September, as of last week, pipe prices had gone up eight percent, eight percent since September. And that's small diameter pipe. With large diameter pipe, it seems to go up the more, the larger we get, and this project is all twenty-seven inch and thirty inch PVC pipe, along with the steel casing pipe under the railroad. Yeah, the end of the joy, I talked to you, said some of this price has doubled.
So would you say, like, if fifty percent of that, obviously eight hundred thousand, would you say that fifty percent of it is material, or seventy percent?
I would say probably seventy to seventy-five percent of the project costs is material. The remainder of it's labor. I don't want to be held to it. I think if we move forward with it, I think we're probably going to be looking at a number around two point five. That's just, all I can tell you is that's my gut feeling, it's usually close, but I think it's going to be close to two five.
I was hoping it was like my situation most time when I want to get something repaired. The, the cost of the material is this much, but they're going to charge it that much for.
And a lot of times we have that, but when you're dealing with this large pumps with BFPs and all the wiring and control panels, the MCCs and all the cord, the telemetering from the pump station back to the plant, it's all expensive stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, we have exclusivity on some of the items for our programs. Everything's expensive.
So it's a lot more material cost than it is labor cost.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll do as much precast and pre-manufactured units as we can, so the installation is down. It's just, I mean, that one pump might be $200,000 just for one pump, and we've got three of them.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Not requesting any action, just informational, since we were planning on awarding today.
Thank you. Okay, item K-two, discussion of action to enter into agreement with NASCCHC and Carol Morley Beckley, or Beck. Hey, Joel?
The only comment I have on this is that we've been in discussions with the, see, the Cultural Center of Henry County, some with the schools, some with Carol Beck. And the Cultural Center of Henry County recently went to the school board and requested for an extension of their project, of the central school project, to save the General Johnson Auditorium. And what I can say is that we are actively in negotiating with, with them on a new agreement that we are party to, and that more details will be coming out in your packets for when this would come to you as legislation, so. Is that fair?
The agreement's with the school board, Joel, is part of our agreement contingent upon them accepting the one-year extension?
That's part of, part of the negotiation is about the extension, yes.
All right, you're just looking for us to direct the law director to draft legislation?
Correct.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. Item K-three, discussion of action on application for change of LLC membership interest from MPC Investment LLC to SEI Speedway Holdings LLC. Joel?
Lou, this is a liquor permit transfer, and that there's, no action is required, but no action means acceptance of that transfer, too, so.
And you're going to have to have some pretty decent reasons to, to say otherwise, so. They're not known for selling liquor to underage people, are they?
No, not to my knowledge.
No, we had no recent cases.
And this is statewide, it's just, it has to do with ownership changes, essentially. So it has nothing to do with new licenses or anything like that. Whenever they have an increase in, in ownership for a particular individual, you've got something like this, so.
All right, moving on to around the table. Molly.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
There's a ribbon cutting for the new Maumee River Bridge next Tuesday, the ninth. I will send an email out to see if you can make it or not. I'll repeat that email to whoever it came from. I cannot make it, I have a work commitment that takes me out of the area for that day. I spoke briefly with Congressman Latta on Saturday night in defiance. He and I both were participating in the defiance Halloween parade. We spoke briefly about the potential for payments for, careful how I say this, undocumented immigrants seeking asylum, particularly during the months of May of two thousand and eighteen to July of two thousand and eighteen, and those $400,000 payments. It was an interesting conversation. He is getting more calls about that issue right now than anything else going on in the federal government. I thought Halloween was nice, it was nice to see different safety vehicles out and those kinds of things. I know I passed, Firetruck was in a church parking lot, just nice to see, you know, us taking, taking part. The, the PD showed up to the St. Paul Chunk of Treats, so that was kind of nice for them to do that, so appreciate that. It's nice being, that's something you talked about, Chief, when you first take that job, of being members of community, so I appreciate that. And if Chief Ryan was here, too, did we leave him out in the hallway? He knew he was coming back in, right? He was here originally.
End ball. End ball.
Assuming tomorrow goes the way we all think it will go, Dr. Cordis, are we going to invite Dr. Cordis to spend time with us during the budget meeting?
Yes.
Typically, right? Okay, someone will do that? Okay. And that's basically all ahead. Thank you very much.
Hey, Dan.
Nothing.
Ken?
Are we getting into leaf pickup time?
Yes, I believe we scheduled it.
Yeah.
I don't recall the dates, but we do have a schedule.
I thought it was next week.
The next week? I hate to say.
We have the notice, but it's not out.
The notice is sent, I apologize, I don't recall the dates off the top of my head, but we are gearing up for it.
I have nothing else. Ross?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Kevin?
This next week's going to be mainly focusing on the budget and getting that around for the first round for the November eleventh. Certainly some challenges that we got to face, but nothing that I don't think we can overcome. Some of it, the challenges, is just the learning of how it's done for myself, but changing the process is just another challenge that we're going to go to, but I think the changes are for the better. So Joe and I's been working on that and focusing on that for the next week and a half, so. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
What time does it start? Eight o'clock, under what?
Unless you want to start earlier. The real challenge, Kevin, is staying on schedule. That's what you'll find.
What time do we start? 7:30 or?
I thought it was, what, gosh, I don't have the schedule in front of me. I'll, I'll email it back out.
Eight, right? I think eight.
We started at eight.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Like eight to, eight to four, but we get out of here at five type of thing?
Ish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For like eight to two on Saturday.
Eight to noon on Saturday.
Oh, it's usually like two.
Or maybe two o'clock.
So, if that's some of your changes, you're talking about cutting it in half or shorter? Is that what you're going to surprise us with?
Well, we'll find out.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Joel?
No, like Kevin said, the, everything's revolving around the budget for us right now and tracking income tax projections from now until the end of the year, but also utility receipts. So, got the October income tax report in today. So, it's looking favorable. We're already ahead, with two months to go, we're already ahead of what we budgeted for. So, that's positive news. That's all I have.
Billy?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. And I'll just ask Chad.
Mulligan?
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Thanks to Mr. Tewksbury for the report in the packet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, great. Yes, good. I'm glad you brought that up because we didn't have a meeting for, I mean, it was lack of agenda items, but we didn't feel it was enough to warrant having a whole meeting. So.
Chad, if you could just give us an update on Michigan and Sheffield, please.
This afternoon, we did the scratch courses of asphalt, which is basically where we take the old junky asphalt, smooth it up before we put the top on. We were able to put the top on the northerly block of North Sheffield. So, the northerly block of North Sheffield's done. The other three blocks will be done tomorrow. Then it'll just be a matter of punchless items adjusting manholes. But the pavement should all go on tomorrow unless it rains or snow.
Did you get that document? Chad said snow first.
Thanks, Chad. I don't have anything else. All right, item M, approved payment of bills. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the payment of bills shall stand approved. Okay, they stand approved. Have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Rocks, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.